I just see that science will miss.
Yeah, we don't hold the lenses. Haven't seen him in months.
No, it's just you and your wife in your wife office.
No, we have, right?
Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone with us in council chambers as well as those of us joining us via Zoom tonight. Is there a motion on the floor to adopt the agenda this evening? Their second?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Thank you. At this time, I would like to welcome Master Pastor Mike Thevenham from Multiplied Church to lead us in invocation this evening.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Let's pray. Father, we just, we thank you for this day that you've given us, Lord. We thank you for yet another change in the seasons. God, we thank you for this evening where we can come together in freedoms that were sacrificed by all the veterans that we just celebrated this past Friday. God, we thank you for their sacrifice of time, of life, and time spent with family. But we just ask that in our freedoms, Lord, that you allow us to be civil and, God, as we, as we come this evening to this town council meeting, that, God, you would, you would give wisdom to our leaders this evening, Father, as they lead our great town. We pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Thevenham. Everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, which stands in America, and to the republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, we will move into our special presentations this evening. That's on the agenda. We will have the presentation by the Centralina Council Retreat.
I'm going to turn it over to Lee to introduce Centralina Council Governments, and then they'll take it from there.
Thank you. So wanted to introduce you tonight to Geraldine Gardner. She's Executive Director of Centralina. She's going to be leading our retreat on December the third, and she's going to come up and talk to us about what to expect and some things to prepare for as we get ready for that.
Good evening, everyone, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm Geraldine Gardner with Centralina, and I'm delighted for a few minutes on your agenda this evening. So, Centralina, for those of you who aren't familiar with our organization, we've been serving the nine county Greater Charlotte region for over fifty years. Our mission is to lead regional collaboration and spark local action so that we can improve quality of life and expand opportunity. One of the ways we do that is by supporting our local government members. We do that through technical assistance services. We offer grants services. We do lots of things. And under technical assistance, we facilitate meetings, help communities with strategic planning processes, and offer HR services. So it's under this context that we're working with you all on your upcoming retreat on December third. Part of our job as facilitators of this experience is to help you achieve the outcomes that you would like from spending this day together. Especially on a weekend retreat, it's time taken away from your other responsibilities and your families. And it's up to us to work with your team to design a productive and enjoyable experience. So it all starts with objectives. What is it that the council wants to achieve through this time together? We work to design an agenda and a series of exercises and engagements that will achieve those objectives. We are also neutral facilitators. At the end of the day, we don't have a stake in the outcomes of any of your decisions. Our role is to make sure everyone's voice is heard, all perspectives are on the table, and to create the conditions under which you all can make effective decisions for your town. So we do that by working with your manager and your team to help understand what you're trying to achieve during this day. And then also, we're going to have a follow-up to this meeting today with a short survey. We'll ask you to help us understand what you would like to get out of this time together. Another thing we're looking to understand is how you best learn and make decisions and work together. As adults, we all learn differently. We process information differently, and we make decisions differently. So some people might really enjoy spending eight hours of their Saturday together. Other people might feel like that's time spent in other ways. So how can we tap into the excitement that you all have in coming together? How can we make sure that we're offering different ways of you understanding information, being presented information, and making decisions? So I promise it's not going to be eight hours of someone lecturing to you. We will have lots of different activities and ways to make sure we're accomplishing the objectives that you have. In your packet, we did provide a short, one-page overview. One of the things that I've learned in working with Lee and with Rob is that you'd like to build on the work that you accomplished last year by setting clear goals for the town, and also think about how to refresh the town's vision and mission statement. So we'll be working those objectives into your agenda. This overview document is just what Centralina uses to talk about strategic planning in the local government context. So that vision, mission, and set of values is really the foundation for all the work that you do, and the guidance that you all provide as a council. The goals stem from what you're trying to achieve in the vision statement, and then the specific strategies start to get a little bit more detailed on how and what and when you invest in certain programs or activities that will help achieve the town's vision. So this is just a reference sheet for you to have. We'll come back to it at the retreat on the third, and we'll plan to sort of work our way through these different components. Every strategic planning process needs to be guided by the local needs and conditions. So some communities that we work with, this is a six-months process, different types of community engagement. Others are building on good work that's already been done, and it can be a little shorter. So we're hoping that we'll get a good start to your process on the third, and that we'll be able to provide some recommendations on how you can continue that work moving forward. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the, the day. As much as we know, we're just starting to do some planning now. Or any other questions you have about Centralina?
Well, thank you, Geraldine. I appreciate you coming in and, you know, counsel what it'll look like next before we get to the council retreat. Obviously, everybody's extremely excited to spend eight hours with me on a, on a Saturday. I could see it on your faces. But before then, we'll try to streamline it by, as Geraldine said, sending out some surveys to help us build that, that final agenda to get a lot of input that doesn't require cross-communication, all of the individual input ahead of time, so that we're not coming there unprepared. So we, we will have, you know, a plan to move forward to execute that day and get as much out of it as we can. And that we don't expect to solve all the problems in the world at that meeting. This will, you know, be the good first step of mission statement, vision statement, core values and goals. But we do plan to build on that throughout the budget process and then move into our long-range strategic plan that we'll be asking or presenting to council through the budget process that will ask Zach to lead and have lots of community engagement. So I wouldn't put, set our standards too high, but also want to definitely utilize the great folks at Centralina to help us facilitate this and get us all swimming in the same direction.
Thank you, Geraldine. Next up, under Special Presentation, Brian Lee will present the audit.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. All right. So tonight I'll be discussing our fiscal year 2022 financial audit results. And also with me tonight, she's got some slides at the end of the presentation, but Carrie Dunlap is our Audit Manager for Martin Starnes and Associates. And so she'll be here if you have any questions or any comments about the audit process along the way. And that's what she'll do at the end, is kind of describe the audit process and any of the findings that they had in that, in the audit. Not findings in terms of financial findings, because we didn't have any of those in the report, but just what she found in doing her audit this year. So first, I want to touch on some of the significant impacts for fiscal year 22, and that is the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2022. Some large capital items that we had this year, we purchased land for a new public safety complex that we will construct in the future. Also did the abatement of asbestos in those buildings, did fire training in them, and then tore them down and cleared those lots. And that total cost was about $1.4 million. We constructed new water and sewer lines, as well as rehabbed existing sewer lines all throughout town totaling about $1.3 million. Some revenue impacts that we had this year, property tax revenues increased about 4% or about $422,000. This is natural growth. This is, you know, the tax rate that was just increased for fiscal year 23 has not impacted these revenues yet. So this is just new, new roofs and new commercial businesses in town that contribute to that 4% growth. Intergovernmental tax revenues increased approximately 21% or about $1.3 million. This is typically sales taxes, franchise taxes, utility sales taxes, all grouped together there. One different thing that we had this year is our ARPA funds. The funds that we recognized this year are the funds that we spent. So that's about $600,000 of that 1.3 million is the ARPA funds that we had to recognize as revenue this year. So as, as you're aware, we received 2.6 million in the fiscal year and 5.3 for the entire grant. But we only recognized the revenue on grants as we spend those dollars. So you'll see us recognize that, that $5 million every next couple of years as we actually spend it. Contributions of infrastructure from developers amounted to approximately $8.25 million. This is a huge number for us. We haven't had a figure like that in a number of years. And I'll detail on the next slide where some of that revenue came from. Water and sewer and stormwater revenues increased about 9% or $827,000. Knowing that our growth, our new roofs and new businesses amounted to about 4%, and we had a 5% rate increase for water and sewer. That 9% growth is right in line with our expectations. Then these bottom three items are also some, some really big monumental things for the town. These are our savings that we transfer to the capital reserve funds. So the capital reserve funds, transfer funds into the operating funds to buy these capital items. And at the end of the year, the net income from each of the general fund, the water, sewer, and stormwater fund are transferred back and utilized as savings for future capital purchases. So the general fund increased from last year by about 27%. Now, it's a total transfer of $3.95 million. Thank you. The water and sewer fund increased by about 28%, and that transfer totaled $1.85 million. And then stormwater also had a transfer of about $350,000. That shows as a decrease from last year, because last year was our first year establishing that capital reserve fund. So we transferred in many years of savings all at one time. It was about $1.1 million. This year was more of an annual recurring transfer of about 350. So this chart here shows your government-wide net position. This is kind of the balance sheet for the entire town. So total net position reached 86.3 million. So total net position is not over on the graph. The graph shows you capital restricted and unrestricted net position, and that's what is summed together to get total net position. So that net position of 86.3 million is a 20% increase from ending balance of 2021. And if, if you want to speak of this in terms of how many times does this, does this net position cover our expenditures in a given year? It covers about three and a half years of expenditures. So if we were to liquidate the town, stop getting revenue, we could actually operate for three and a half years as we did this year without noticing any, any difference. Of course, you'd be liquidating all the assets of the town, so that's not really a feasible thing to go through. But it kind of gives you a feel of, of our balance sheet compared to our annual operations. At the end of last year, this number was 2.96 times expenditure. So we did pick up half the year in one year of operations, so a very successful year there. Unrestricted net position of 26.5 million. That is the green bar on the graph, and that was also a 22% increase from last year. And then our net investment in capital assets is the blue bar on the graph, 22% increase as well from the prior year. And one of the big impacts for that number is the contributions of infrastructure from developers. So you can see the general fund received about $6.3 million, and the stormwater fund with $2 million. I wanted to point out some of the developments that contributed to these. Holcomb Woods contributed 3.4 million of streets, sidewalks, Greenway and streetlights, and about $1.2 million of stormwater. So the Holcomb Woods neighborhood coming online, you know, these numbers don't hit us in the normal budget process. You don't see any revenue coming through the door, but we've picked up considerable amount of infrastructure in the town based on this development coming online. Some of the other ones that contributed funds are the courtyards on Harris Depot, Tractor Supply Development, all of the infrastructure around Tractor Supply. And then Churchill Farms contributed about 2.2 million as well. Another look at the government-wide, so this is across the entire town, includes general fund, water, sewer, and storm. Total revenues reached about 39.5 million. That's a $10.1 million increase from last year. Of course, about a little over 8 million of that was the contributions from developers. So really, it's about a $2 million increase in terms of our normal revenue inflow. Total expenses of 24.9 million, about a $650,000 increase from the year before. Unrestricted cash across the entire town totaled about $28 million. At the end of the year, this is a $2.5 million increase from June 30th the year before. Restricted cash, I'd like to show this as well. It's not in the unrestricted cash number, but it, it fell about $875,000 to 3.5 million. And that's actually a positive thing as far as I'm concerned. These are funds that we've either had granted to us or that we've taken out loans on. And so we want to spend those down and put them to use for the purpose that they're restricted for as quickly as we can and not let them sit around. So it's actually a positive thing to see that restricted cash number come down from year to year. Repayments of long-term debt across the entire town of about 3.1 million. You see that that's down from 11.2 in the prior year. And that's because we did a little over an $8 million debt refunding last year. So comparing apples to apples, we did about 2.8 million in normal debt service last year and about 3.1 million this year. All right. So those two slides were both government-wide across the entire town. Now I've got a couple on just the general fund. The total revenue of 18.9 million, that's a $1.2 million increase from '21. Total expenses of 17 million, about a $1.3 million increase from the prior year. And the other two bars that we've got on the graph there are other financing sources and uses in the gray cream color and red. And the other financing sources and uses are, a couple of different things can be contained in those, but typically it's just our transfers in and out. So you could think of the gray one, the sources being the transfers into fund capital, and the red one, our uses, our transfers out over to the savings account. So we always want to see that red over the gray cream-colored bar there, and that means that we're actually adding to savings every year. So you can see here on the graph that we've done that for five years in a row. Repayments of long-term debt, I think I covered that with the 1.3 million. We did 1.1 million of refunding last year just within the general fund. So that's our difference there from the two years. And then governmental capital outlay of 3.1 million. And you can see we did 5.7 million in 2021. So I did want to draw your attention to expenditures over the first three years on this graph are very level at about 12 million. And then you see two extremely heavy years of capital outlay. That's what's bumped us up above 15 million for the past two years. All right. Next couple charts here will show you some water and sewer fund operations and statistics. So operating revenue in the water and sewer fund of about 10.8 million, that's a $400,000 increase from the prior year. Expenses of about 9.7 million, and that does include depreciation. And so that's a million-dollar increase from the prior year. About 200,000 of that increase is due to depreciation. The remaining 800,000 is really split into our advanced meter purchasing program that we've been doing to get the AMI smart meters into people's homes and, or in front of people's homes. And then the rest of it is just that inflationary impact that we've been talking about through budget season with rate increases on our water purchase and our sewer treatment and all other costs that go into running this, this fund that makes up about, you know, 6 to 800,000 there. Unrestricted cash in the water and sewer fund reached 9.8 million. That's a $1.7 million increase from last year. And repayments of long-term debt of about 1.8 million. That's right in line with the prior year, if not for about $7 million of refunding that we did in '21. And capital outlay purchases in the water sewer fund totaled about 435,000 from about 246. I also wanted to point out here on the graph that the red bar for non-operating revenues essentially consists of investment income. And as you can see, over the past three years, it's almost not on the graph at all. But we do hope to see that come back this year, and we're already having a lot better results on our investment income there. Stormwater fund operations, same, same set of information here, but just for the stormwater fund. Operating revenues of just over 700,000, operating expenses of about 547,000, and that does include the depreciation of 132,000. See the depreciation bar on the graph growing every year, and that's going to continue to grow considerably over the next several years as we've brought on so much more stormwater infrastructure and actually captured that value with a lot of the most recent developments that we have. So you'll see that number grow over time. Unrestricted cash has reached right at $2 million for the fund. As, as we've talked about in the past, is very difficult, if not impossible, to finance stormwater projects, because no one wants a ditch or a pipe in a ditch as their collateral. So it's hard to find takers on that debt. So our methodology has been to save up funds every years and then be able to accomplish a big project that has a big impact for the region. And so that's what we've done here. We've saved up about 2 million, and that'll be ready to put into the next big stormwater project that we have. Also wanted to touch base on grant funding that we received this year. As you know, every year we get a distribution from the state for power bill funding that can be used for streets only. Got about 534,000 this year in, in '22, and that is up to about 555 for fiscal year '23. We did get the $10,000 Volkswagen EV station grant that's at Harrisburg Park. And as we've mentioned many times, the ARPA funds of 2.6 million was received during the year, and the other 2.6 million was actually received in July of this year. So you'll see that show up in the next audit report. And next year, I'll probably have to add a few slides here for, for Mallory's Grants, but that'll be a positive thing for us. So I want to stop there real quick and just see if there's any questions or comments, and then we've got a couple benchmarks and a few other things to look at. Okay. So the LGC likes to compare similarly sized municipalities that have also similar offerings of services and give us some benchmarks to look at out across the state. So what you'll see on these next couple graphs are a gray bar or a gray line for any sort of minimum required level that the state or the LGC has established. The blue line will be for Harrisburg, and then green and red will be for our group-weighted average and our state-weighted average. So this first one is available fund balance for the general fund. So we implemented our 40% fund balance policy in 2018. So that's where you can see us drop from 60% down into the 30s. And our 40% fund balance policy is calculated a little differently than the LGC does their available fund balance. So that's why when we reach our 40, we really reach about 30 on the LGC scale. So we've been hovering around 30 for the past several years, and we are there again this year because we meet our 40%. But I wanted to show this year that if you take our capital reserve fund balance and add it back into the general fund, available fund balance, like most other municipalities, what, what would that, what would we look like if we did that? And so our little Harrisburg symbol there shows you where we would be if we added our reserve balances back end. We'd be at about 64%. So right there in line, slightly above both our group and our state-weighted average. Now, some of them probably do have reserve funds as well, but not, not nearly as many, you know, not a high percentage of the group. So I think that we still stand a little above our group and our state average there. The water and sewer fund, the quick ratio is one that the LGC likes to look at and, and monitor for us. And that is just simply current assets, ability to pay off current liabilities. So it's really a short-term measure of how healthy the fund is. So the LGC likes to know that you can do that two times without having to draw down on any other resources of the fund. We've always been in the four to six range, and this year we popped up to about six, which was just right in line with both of our group and state average. This is really just a, a measure of, a snapshot at June 30th of our liabilities and, and our current assets. And so our current assets are growing. As I said, cash is, is increasing, receivables are in good shape. And we've actually been able to bring our liabilities down considerably, and so that's why you see the jump this year. A lot of things go into that, but one thing we just have tried to do over the past few years is really stop spending, stop incurring expenses, and let us close the year down and have, have kind of a simple, you know, June 30th to report on. And so that's what you see here, so we had a pretty good result there. Another benchmark that we look at in the water sewer fund is the operating margin. So anytime you produce something, if a business is producing anything, they've got to cover the costs, those direct costs that it takes to produce that item or deliver that item. And then you've got to have some, you know, profit margin left for your overhead and for savings. And, and so when looking at the group and the state average, you can see that a successful water and sewer fund should be probably between about 10 and 20% operating margin to run a successful water utility. And so we were right in that range. We've been bouncing between them for the last several years and have pretty well leveled off about 17% over the past few years. So really good as far as benchmarking to all of our peer municipalities. And, you know, it shows me that our rates are reasonably appropriate to run the, the size and the scale of enterprise fund that we have. Operating revenues per capita, this is a good look at what is the entire fund, how much does each person in town contribute to the overall revenue of the fund? So group average was kind of getting out of hand, about to go off the chart across the state, and then fell considerably in 2021. My presumption is that's COVID-related, so a lot of fees were dropped and a lot of, probably a lot of revenue was waived there. But we, you know, we stayed consistent with, with recognizing our revenue as we always have, and then we, we allowed people to pay with payment arrangements and at, you know, when they could. So we didn't affect our revenue number per se. So I'm still a little curious about what happened to that group average across the state. But you can see now that the group and the state average have come together at about $520 per person to fund the water and sewer enterprise across the entire year. So we're at about 540, which is down $5 from last year. And what that comes out to is about $45 a person a month. So, and that is per person. That's not per household. So commercial weighs on this pretty heavily. And then the different makeup of your household, but you can, you can probably calculate your household and be a little bit cheaper than that $45 a person, just looking at your own water bill just because of the commercial impact. The last comparison I have here is our tax rate comparison. You can see that the two averages have been at about 40, you know, 45 to 42 cents. They're both at 42 and a half for 2021. We have been at 35 and a half for a number of years, and with the recent increase, we'll be at 43 and a half. So all those graphs will merge together for next year at this time. And I don't know what happened. Okay. All right. So this is another way to look at our revenue analysis across the entire town. What you'll see is the category of the revenue, and underneath that will be the percentage of the whole for this year and in brackets for the prior year, just so you can see a little bit of the change from year to year. Property tax, water, sewer, those are always going to be our, our largest portions of this graph here at about a third each, at 27 and 29%. Sales tax and intergovernmental usually next at 10 and 8%. And then the remaining revenues add up to, you know, less than 10% with sales and services miscellaneous and stormwater. The outlier this year is the contributions of infrastructure jumped up to 22% from its typical 2%. And what you can see is that just stole a piece of, of the pie from property tax, water, sewer, and a little bit from sales tax. But each of those grew proportionally like we would want them to. They all stayed in proportion to each other. It's just the contributions grew so much this year. So we should, I mean, I hope that we continue to get this sort of contributed capital from developers. So maybe this will be our new norm, but you, you should see that the proportions stay the same. Um, so maybe this will be our new norm, but um you you should see that the proportions stay the same between these different revenue types. You give me a, okay. You mind giving me a next slide? Thank you. Expenditure analysis by function, this is across the entire town, all the different functions of government. Um, so the largest here is public safety at thirty percent, water and sewer at twenty seven percent. Um, generally, culture and recreation would be next at eleven percent, environmental protection at eight. And then a lot of our other departments like transportation and general government at about four percent or less. Debt service, we would hope to have in that twelve to fifteen percent range as you see this year. Of course, that's coming off of thirty seven percent last year with the major refunding. Um, and this is another one that most, most of the functions here stayed proportional from year to year. The only actual increases that they gained a larger piece of the pie this year, regardless of the debt service impact. For public safety and culture and recreation, we'll see those on the next slide as well. So this is that same sort of analysis, but only for the general fund. Uh, so you can see public safety at forty percent of general fund expenditures. Uh, culture and recreation at sixteen, environmental protection at twelve and debt service at eleven. Um, so like I said, public safety and culture and rec are the only ones that increased uh irrespective of the debt service decrease this year. This is the expenditure analysis by objects. So we're back to across the entire town. And this is looking at the four different categories of expenditures that we have. And really you could combine debt service and capital outlay into one capital based um category. You're either paying for it now and capital outlay or you're paying for it over time with that service, but you're always buying capital with with debt. So that kind of that capital group of expenditures is about twenty seven percent. Personnel cost at thirty three, and then all other expenditures required to run the town, operations and maintenance of about forty percent. Um, another one here where everything stayed in proportion to what we've seen over the last several years, if not for that refunding. All right. And with that, um, that takes care of all the um analysis for for the audit. So I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have. Um, I wanted to mention that the financial statements were um in sitting in front of you tonight. Uh, please let me know if you have any questions as you redo that. As you look through that, um, be glad to sit down and answer any questions that you have on that. And if there's no questions for me now, I will turn it over to Carrie Dunlap with Martin Sterns. Is she unmuted? Okay. It's gonna be worth it.
She's here. Yeah, see her on here.
Well, that was a pleasure to audit. I think that's what she was gonna say.
Yeah, she typed in the chat. She was having difficulty.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
I connected with my phone, technology man. Okay, well, yeah, as Brian said, I'm sure it will be worth it for the next five minutes. But yes, it's good to see you all and thank you for allowing us to be your auditors this year. We really did enjoy it. Believe it or not, um, Brian, everyone at Harrisburg is very much a pleasure to work with. So um, can you go? Brian, are you controlling it or? James? Okay, I'm just gonna talk for a few minutes about our audit process. Please let me know if you have any questions. But we really started the planning and risk assessment process as soon as we found out we were going to be the auditors this year. So. We dive into the um council minutes, we read what's going on at the town so that we were aware of any new grants, any new debt. Um, we're always making sure that everything's implemented from a Gatsby standpoint. So. The planning and risk is ongoing throughout the year. Um, then we have our interim procedures, which is typically in the summer and we. Test all the internal control pieces. We do walkthroughs. If there's any compliance grants that need to be tested, that's when we look at it. And then. Come September, we do the final field work and that's where we tie. All of the um work papers to the balance sheet accounts. We look at cash, AR, debt, um, all that fun stuff. And then Brian will send us the draft of the financial statements and we issue our opinion letters after that has gone through tech review. For the report and all of our work papers, and then we submit that to the LGC. So it sounds. Well, but it is not, especially this year because we have all the ARPA money coming in that we have to look at. And then the Gatsby eighty seven leases was a lot of fun this year. So um, we really appreciate Brian's help with getting all of that implemented and. Um, going through all the questions and making sure everything was ironed out correctly. So. Now that the report has been approved by the LGC, we go back into the planning and risk assessment again for next year. So it's. You never really get much of a break, maybe a couple months here and there, but um, that's kind of the audit process. And so the next slide. Um, a summary of an unmodified opinion, there's no reason to think there were any material misstatements in the financials. And staff was fully prepared and cooperative, which we very much appreciate because that allowed us to get the reports to the LGC. Not only timely but early. So we appreciate that very much. And then the next slide. Um, Brian already mentioned this in his, but I had to, of course, throw some numbers in here too, but the LGC is what. Um, they look at your fund balance available as a percentage of your expenditures net of power bill. And so that's at twenty nine percent this year, slight um decrease, which was to be expected. And. The median, like Brian mentioned, is about forty six percent of other similar populations. And then the minimum the LGC wants to see is twenty five percent. So you're very much within the range where it needs to be. And then the next slide, um, the LGC also has. Performance indicators that they require to be discussed at council meetings now. And so the good news is there were no red flags. If there were any red flags, they would have to be reading. Um, family audit submission and you have stable property tax valuation and collection person. So if there were um any findings, if there were any um ratios that were. Not being met, anything like that, that would be required to be presented, and I have nothing to present. So that is good news. And the next slide, that's all I have for you. I know that was super quick, but if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Counsel, are there any questions for Brian or Carrie?
I've got two um quick ones. So that was last fiscal year. How do we expect the hair, the audit to change? And how will that make revenue or graphs change? Given the investment in commercial paper, how does that change? And maybe Carrie has any experience with how we should, if we look at that more closely, since it's our first time doing it or, you know?
Yeah, uh, yeah, she can tell you, you know, how that's going to affect the audit process. Um. Right now, cash is really easy to audit. So um, you know, it really boils down to our bank statements. And so now. A big portion of that is just going to be reflected in commercial paper. And so we'll have to show the fair market value of that as of June thirtieth. As we know, a lot of them are going to be crossing that threshold. Uh, so there is more work to be done to and to. Report on and to audit that commercial paper, but I don't think it's significant um for Carrie and her team, but I'll let her weigh in on that.
I I agree with Brian. Um, that'll be a pretty straightforward change of the. It's gonna go from one bucket to the next. Um, it would really be if it was a grant dollar such as the ARPA, that's gonna be a lot more cumbersome from an audit standpoint for next year and the years going forward. But the commercial paper will be pretty cumbersome for Brian changing all the percentages, but that's all.
Uh, and the last question I have, I think it's it's best best practice or it's just been our policy to switch up auditing firms every year. Um, I think this was their first year with us. Do we do it every three to five? Is that right?
We have done, Leaking Wayne on this too. We've done probably, I think, five plus years with Martin Starnes. We then went with another firm for three. And then came back to Martin Starnes. And um, it is, it's good practice to at least go out and get quotes and see who else is out there. Um, but there are also a lot of benefits to having a strong relationship with somebody. And especially one like Martin Starnes, who is such an expert in the state. So it would, you know, we're able to bounce a lot of things off of them. I've I have the ultimate confidence in our report that when they sign off on it, we're in good shape. Um, so there are a lot of benefits to being with them, but that is something that we look at.
I'm not picking on you, Carrie. I just, it was just a question. Thank you.
Any other questions for Brian or Carrie?
And Brian, the audit did include the HBA, right?
It did, yes. So this was an audit for HBA and HCYA, and their tax returns were filed as well. So all three entities are taken care of.
Anybody else? Thank you, Brian. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Carrie.
Yeah, have a good night.
At this point, we will move into our public comments. We did not have anyone sign up on this this evening. Is there anyone online? That would like to address counsel during public comment? Raise your hand. In the chat. Okay, no one is speaking then. We'll move on to consent agenda. Is there a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda as presented this evening? Motion to approve is our second. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion has carried. Thank you. We'll move into communications and we'll start with our town manager's report.
Good evening, mayor, council, uh, members of the community. I have a few uh short updates uh for this evening. Um, we'll start with the, you know, our departments in the uh Parks Department. We're uh. In the midst or just wrapping up our fall uh program scheduling. And uh, one item to note is that basketball uh registrations this year over a thousand players. So uh, significant improvements year after year after year. Um, but I thought that was a significant benchmark that was just reported out of parks. So I'd like to pass that along. As well as our uh trick or treat event was a a resounding success and. And the the mayor's gonna speak on that, but the attendance on that was uh extremely high. And uh, we're we're probably looking at five, six thousand people at at that event. So continue to uh really churn out events here. Um, on brand with what we do. Um, also, in the past month, we moved the uh this year, but the event happened in the past month. We moved art walk to the Harris Depot Park. And uh, we got really good success out of that. Very probably the venue moving forward, but um. A lot of good feedback uh from all the participants, and we think it uh really gave us an environment there that was conducive to to that type of event, made it uh. Um, a little more intimate, um, uh, little softer. Um, environment to have something like that. So really proud of that event, and I know our um. Our post office building got a uh a lot of action there too. So Ted was able to sit in there and uh educate everybody. So. Um, we love how that event turned out and that's our update for parks. Um, we remain extremely busy on the planning, development, zoning. Uh, side of side of the house. So we have several projects coming up for rezoning. Um, not necessarily have them all pinned down, but in the near future, the Mulberry industrial site. Uh, will be before you guys, they're still working out some things with the landowner and the applicant to uh cross all the Ts, dot all the Is. On that, but that'll be on the uh, the near term horizon. Hawthorne Hawthorne Senior Living Center as well as pursuing their rezoning and uh, you may be reached out to on that. Um, I know folks have already been uh discussing the charter mixed use site and that that continues to. Um, go through discussions with staff and and the developer. Uh, some things that we've uh approved for construction and are starting on, the Chick-fil-A out of Farmington. Dunkin' Donuts uh out of Farmington Famous Toastery, all three of those at the uh corner entrance there at Rocky River Road and. And uh Farmington Parkway, uh as well as uh Bubba's Bunkhouse here in town center. I think we can all see the the facade around it going in. Um, Panera Bread. Cookout and uh Harriet and Bueller's are all approved. And in some, some form or fashion, either under design or under construction and and ready to go. So. Those are our uh commercial restaurant type of things going in. We also have two daycares, the learning experience at at Publix and Everbrook Academy at Farmington. Um, new developments. And Zach reports to us that through October, we have two hundred and three single family uh homes that have been built so far in the town. Um, as far as residents, that's over seven hundred residents just in fiscal year twenty two to date. And we are on pace to hit about two hundred and sixty to two hundred and seventy five new homes in the town. So that'll, that'll be around that thousand. New residents or more um for this year. So we haven't seen really any slowdown. It has kind of peaked and trogged. Some months are fifteen, some months are forty five. Um, but uh, we we continue that sort of, you know, twenty to to thirty homes per month. Uh, pace and um. For those of you that uh were here that approved the Auburn subdivision, that was a an innovative design project. So that's a little bit different than. What we normally see going in and they have pulled for four permits for homes out there. So it might be something to drive through. Keep an eye, keep an eye on and see uh, these are the the one acre plus lot, homes without curb and gutter, wide lawns, uh. Um, concrete ribbon curb, streets instead of the the high back curb. So. Uh, that I, we believe that will be a very nice neighborhood when it's all said and done. So glad to see that finally moving. On the public work side of things, we've started the design for the town center area traffic improvements. And primarily the Roberta Road i- improvements that council had approved. And uh, in other significant, just kind of bragging point that Mallory um had brought up to me that we, we currently um have either accepted or have under construction. Uh, three miles of Greenway in the town with another three and a half mile under design. So, you know, just a a short past few years, we've really um accelerated that program and. And are looking at almost, you know, almost seven miles of Greenway that the town has either gotten through developer contribution. Or through town CIP in a very short period of time. So excellent uh excellent job there by our public work staff. And um, budget is in full swing internally. So our department heads and the management team have been working on staffing. CIP and budget enhancements, and we'll be doing that. Uh, we've already started that uh beginning of the month. And we'll continue to do that through about mid December so that we can get the uh framework for the budgets that will roll out to you guys in January. And as a reminder, you know, we had it uh. Presentation tonight by Centralina Council of Governments, who will be our facilitator at the retreat. That'll be December third. And uh, Lee and I have a big plans for everybody there. So big uh plan to have a good time with y'all. Um, setting those uh goals, values and vision, et cetera, moving forward. So that's all I have for tonight. I'll take any questions or any. Sorry, luau theme. It's always luau theme.
Hey, Rob, is the traffic situation taken care of on the cookout thing?
What what's the the situation?
Remember it was make a left coming out of there or something. Was that all it's taking care of?
Um, I have to look back and see I, the the broad answer is it's taken care of. The specifics, I. Um, I'd have to look in and tell you how it was taken care of.
You said it was, it was in the process. I didn't know if it got straightened out in the last few months.
I think our last discussion on that was that in time it would be, but initially.
Well, eventually a left will be prohibited out of there. Um. It won't be prohibited out while it's built, but I believe we added some signage. To send them back to to Sims or something, but I don't remember exactly.
Okay, that's my eyes. No, you said it was in being built. I didn't know that we asked questions on that coming out there making a left.
Yep.
Any other questions for Rob? Brian, back up for our finance monthly reports.
All right, I will try to keep this brief tonight. So for the finance report, as of October 31st, 2022, look at our revenue and expense dashboard for operations. The general fund and its tax collections are the only revenue in red right now at about 23% overall and 17% on tax collections. If you actually take tax collections out of the general fund, that $13.1 million budget and the 2.2 that we have received, then the general fund with all other revenues is right at 33%. So all of the revenues aside from what we know comes in mostly in November, December, January, is right on target for the year. The water and sewer fund is at about 37%. It always starts the year out a little ahead as we have a lot of irrigation right now, and then starts to trend back down to about 100% to close out the year. And the stormwater fund is much more reliable and stays right on target and is at 33% a couple of months into the year. Departmental expenditures operationally in the general government, all the departments are in green. No one's at any risk there. Communications is back down to even at 33%, and everyone else is in good shape. All the other departments in the general fund and the enterprise funds are also in green, except for Parks and Rec. Typically, this starts to pull back a little bit more as we go through these months and July 4th starts to dissipate a little bit out of the budget. In this case, we've seen a lot of expenditures with our events and getting ready for even Christmas events, and then also our athletics as well. So we are keeping an eye on this. I don't see any accounts or anything that concern me right now that aren't related to events or athletics. But we'll continue to keep an eye on that. I don't see any issues elsewhere in the department, though. Salaries townwide are at about 25%, a third of the way through the year. So about a 6, 6% to 8% cushion there heading forward for the rest of the fiscal year. A look at our capital projects this year, single year facility infrastructure improvements. There's a couple I want to draw your attention to. Fire station number one upgrades have begun. Pressure washing and sealing of the outside of the building are scheduled for November. I actually saw some of that work underway this weekend. And other portions of the project are going to follow in the next few months. And some of those were some concrete repairs, some flooring on the inside, some other modifications to the building. Those will all get started here soon. ADA sidewalks, curb ramps and coventry have been replaced, and the trip hazards will be replaced throughout this month to wrap up that project. Lucas Court Construction to build out that road. The easements are all completed, and a construction contract is expected to be presented at next month's council meeting. The fire department land, I mentioned in the audit report, but that is completely cleaned up and a safe site now for us to sit on for a little while until we're ready to build that complex. And then the last item at the bottom are the maintenance garage, power roll-up doors at Parks and Rec, Harrisburg Park. Those have been installed and are in service right now. This shows you our facility and infrastructure projects that are multi-year projects under design. Typical progress on a lot of these design projects here, Stallings Road sidewalks, phase one, and the highway 49 corridor improvements. Those are both still pending DOT approval for the next steps to move forward. That was the case last month and is the case again this month. A little more design work has been done on those. The sidewalks on Hickory Ridge Road, staff is applying for a grant to assist with the construction portion of that project. So it has slowed down a little bit. Davis Creek Greenways and Cambridge Drive, the survey is complete on those and design has been begun for those as well. There are multi-year projects that are in the construction phase. Really only two to report on here, the 2122 water lines, the construction will begin this month and should only take a couple of months to complete. And Sequoia Hills Waterline Loop, the construction is complete on that, and only a final inspection is needed to finish that up, and that is scheduled in November as well. This is a look at our equipment projects for the year. A little bit of progress here from prior months. Had some progress on the MCTs for fire, as you see those percentages going up. And also, the AC machine underwater sewer heading has been received. It has a couple of little components to add to it, and it will be placed into service and ready to use. The excavator for Public Works was received in October and placed in service. You see that move to 100% at the bottom of the list. For vehicles, we actually did have some movement on vehicles this month. Three fire vehicles at the bottom of the list were placed into service. They had their final outfit items and are ready to go there. So it's good to see a few vehicles move off the list. The ladder truck is at about 85%, and we will receive that in December. As we said last month, we closed the financing on that, and so we're ready to pay for that truck when it is delivered. That is a picture of the truck, the most recent one that I've seen. It's pretty. It's a new, it's a new style from the ones that we have right now with it being all red, even up the ladder. But that's a good preview for y'all there. Professional services projects, we moved the financial audit down to 100% with the presentation tonight that wraps up the year. And like Carrie said, we will jump right into planning for next year, but at least this one is done for now. The salary study is also at 99%. That was the, the last piece of that was on the consent agenda tonight. So that will be moved to complete for next month as well. We are now 100% invested in commercial paper for our goal that we, that we set out at the beginning of the year. We've had our first rung of those investments mature, and that happened on October 25th. And we rolled it over to increase a higher yield. And our most recent one that we got was at 537 interest rate. So just out of this world for what government has been able to, to accomplish in the last, I don't know how long. So we haven't, we haven't seen numbers like that in a long time. So that's pretty exciting. We are now on pace to have one rung of our ladder rollover per month and continue to reinvest that as we go forward. So the audit was submitted to the LGC, and they approved our financial statements about a week ago. And as Rob said, the budget is in full swing right now at the staff level. Departments are submitting capital personnel and other major requests to finance into management to be vetted and to be put in form for you. Meetings will be held with departments throughout November, December to discuss those major requests and start to develop the detailed budget that you'll see in January. And again, ARPA funds received of about 5.3, and we have about four and a half left to appropriate. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Brian, when we, you mentioned Lucas Court, who would be next month that we would approve contracts.
Yes, sir.
Given that, is that give it a timeline, say of mid-January for them being completed, or what would?
See what Mallory thinks on that. Yeah.
And they've been kept in the loop during all this?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Mayor, if you don't mind, before you go on to the, to the next item, I did also just want to give Brian and his team, you know, a thank you on the, we kind of don't make a lot of fanfare about it now during, during the budget process, but that's not, you know, it's not as common as you would think that these budget, or I'm sorry, the audit meetings are, are without fanfare. That, that's a big process. And then if we look at our budget, we spend, you know, nearly $72 million, go through Brian's team's department, and they don't control every person that's spending that. And you know, when you, when I, certainly when I was new to local government, I saw some of the terms that they use in these audits, and I don't know what they mean, right? So when it says an unqualified opinion, I'm like, wow, that sounds terrible. What does that mean, right? But that's actually very good. And, and so I just wanted to, you know, point out that Brian and his, his staff, based on the audit that we got back, are doing an outstanding job. And, and all of the terms in there for, for those in the public that may not be as familiar with the terms, really just means that the money is being spent as council directed it, and that it's being spent in a legal, responsible, and transparent way. And that there are multiple checks and balances in the process to make sure that the town's free of risk. So that's a, a big accomplishment. I'm proud of the team's efforts this year, and that's certainly been a multi-year effort. So thank you, Brian, and please thank your, your staff as well.
Thank you, Rob. We will get our law enforcement update. I believe Captain Meesmer is here to give that to us this evening. In a tie.
It's like a Bigfoot sighting. It happens so, so often, but not much. So let's hit the October numbers. We had a total of 4,088 law enforcement-related activities. We did security checks on your homes and businesses 3,084 times. Traffic stops for 572, with an average non-emergency response time of 6 minutes and 52 seconds, meaning no blue light, no siren. So let's get to the fun stuff. As you all know, we, every single time I send you an update, we have problems with larcenies in Harrisburg. I wish I could tell you that that one day will be solved, but I feel like somebody's going to replace. If we arrest you today, you're going to be replaced next week. Good news is, we issued today 17 felony warrants and four misdemeanor warrants for a half a dozen individuals for quite a few larcenies out of Harrisburg. That would be your Lowe's, Publix, Harris Teeter, and store units. Feel pretty good about that. They've, none of them have served yet. The individuals do not know that the warrants are coming, but they'll find out tomorrow. Merry Christmas. The next thing, about, I guess it's two meetings ago, we discussed that day, or two days of hell we all went through with bomb threats going off everywhere.
Right.
As many of y'all know, we had two at Northwest, we had two at Cox Mill High, we had one at Cox Mill Elementary, we had one at Robinson. And I remember calling Lee that day, and Lee answered, and I said, it's coming, you're ready. And lo and behold, we had a gun threat come into Hickory Ridge. And here's your update with that. I'm impressed beyond words for the SRO, Matthew Wilson. He has 1,700 kids. I can't even count to 1,700. He's got 1,700 kids in there. He was there when the call came in that a student with a certain color, black bookbag with blue lining, has a gun in his bookbag. It was not a bomb threat. Matt, within five minutes, had that kid in custody. That is incredible. I gotta admit, I'm flabbergasted by that. He knows those students that well. He could figure out where the kid was and his bookbag. But he also knew the kid well enough that something didn't feel right. When they searched his bookbag, they did find a knife, not a gun. But it did not fit that kid's personality and how well the officer knows him. And he was right. I can now say we have felony charges pending against his stepfather, who was going through a divorce with obviously his mother and wanted to hurt the child and the mother. So he planted the knife and was the one that called in the actual gun threat, hoping to cause ruckus with the child. He is currently fled to state, but we do have him entered state wanted, and we do have the felony charges. The child was reinstated to school with no penalties. And luckily, this was one of the good times where nobody was really in danger. Just so you know, too, when the threat came out and he was working on finding, we also had eight deputies there within a matter of seven minutes, I believe, was our slowest response time. On top of them already having the kid in custody. And those deputies remained on scene for hours until we were guaranteed that this was correct and our initial assumptions were right. Any questions?
I think that says a lot for Deputy Wilson and the relationship he has with those students. I've seen that firsthand, so we're very appreciative of all.
I can't imagine having 1,700 kids and a bookbag, a black bookbag. Kind of wasn't like a Hello Kitty with devil horns. I mean, it's a black bookbag.
Right. Any other questions for Captain Meesmer? Thank you, sir. I believe we have Captain Brady here to give us our fire department updates this evening.
Mayor, Council. I'll be pinch hitting for Chief Dunn tonight.
Thank you.
So we'll get into the monthly calls. If you notice, there's a few things that are a little bit different. We're working off of a new reporting software. So in our call types, you're going to see it broken down even more. So you'll just notice those things, and our response time's going to be a little bit longer because now we're actually picking it up from dispatch until we actually arrive now. So we're actually capturing more data than we did before. So we'll just get into it real quick. Our monthly call volume was 252 calls. Basically, the highlights on the call types, we responded to three structure fires and a couple opinions for that month. Our average unit response time was 531. Of course, now we're adding in that, that time from when we're dispatched until we actually get on the truck. So like I say, you'll see a little difference there. Also, our Harrisburg calls, we totaled 205 for approximately 81% in our district. Outside our district was 47 calls at about 18.7. So with that, we had Engine 32 responded to 98 calls, Engine 33 responded to 103, Ladder 31 was 155, and Engine 31, which is one of our reserves, responded to four. And then our battalion responded to 74 calls. Some of the other highlights that we had for the month was that we had our monthly station safety checks, our annual jar pat testing, which is that we do annually for firefighters to make sure that they're meeting certain standards. We did our ASHA hearing test along with the town. And then, of course, one of the big things, we did a huge hurricane preparedness. You know, we, we were looking possibly at getting deployed when the hurricane came through this past month. And then on our community side, we basically had two stop the bleed classes at Oak Grove Baptist and Harrisburg United Methodist Church. And then we, being that it was Fire Safety Month in October, along with State Fire Marshal's Office, we had a theme of knowing two ways out. And we were able to reach about 500 kids in our schools. So that's like, say, of course, Fire Safety Month is a busy month for us. So that's pretty much our October report. If you have any questions?
We've got one for you.
Yes.
It's probably a two-part question. When you say calls in the district versus out of the district.
Yes.
Is that in the city limits versus out of the city limits?
No, that's us going to, of course, anything within our fire district and then outside of our fire district, like going to Concord or Flow Store or something like that.
And does your new software, does that track those for you?
Yes, it breaks, it breaks it down.
Okay. Thank you.
You're quite welcome. Anything else?
Thank you, Captain Brady.
Y'all have a good evening.
You too, sir. Just a couple of Mayor's comments this evening. I did have the privilege of delivering the keynote speech at the inaugural Beta Club inductions at the middle school, Hickory Ridge Middle School earlier this month. It's really such a great opportunity for these kids to get involved in the community and be recognized for their academic achievements. And I wanted to give a special kudos to Melanie Wilson, the teacher who really worked hard to bring that program to the middle school. The Harrisburg football team is actually playing this Wednesday night. This is the first ever D1 championship game. It's a 7:00 PM kickoff at Harrisburg Park. We hope that you can come out and pack, pack the part to support the football team. I did want to give a shout out and a special thank you to the Parks and Right Department for an amazing trick or treat event. Heard lots of positive feedback. I think that was probably a record, record in numbers for what we had for that. And then we are having our Christmas tree lighting coming up on Friday, December 2nd. So we hope to see you all there. And I did want to welcome, we have a local Boy Scout troop visiting us this evening in the back. Thank you all for being here. They are on their path towards their Eagle Scout Award. So that's the highest recognition they can receive, and we're happy that you could be with us this evening to observe. Thank you so much. That will move into council comments. Are there any comments you'd like to make?
I just have one. I just want to congratulate Diamond Stanton Williams on her victory at the North Carolina House. We appreciate you running and getting interested and doing a good job.
I'd like to thank Rob for putting out on the website the terms for all the boards and the council. I think that'll be really helpful so you're able to go out and do that for anyone that's in the audience. Also, the sustainability will have like five positions, three positions available. If anyone's interested, you can apply. Things closing in about 15, 20 days. Also, just need to check and gems in the room, Stalin's Park, the blue net that goes at the tennis court. I've been asked a couple of times, is that going to be put back up? There used to be one there so that as people go by, they really couldn't see through there, but now it's gone. The linen screen, the windscreen, the windscreen. Okay, thank you.
I'll jump in real quick. You know, Rob, you mentioned that we had 1,000 basketball signups. And I know our park And I know our park and rec staff goes above and beyond time and time again for that. But I'd also like to extend appreciation out to those parents that are out there helping coach and pull that together. Jim knows that I'm a fan of some of the football that goes on. Been to a lot of the games and see these coaches and the time that they give. And it takes, it takes an amazing park and rec department, but it also takes the commitment of the parents to be out there and coaching these kids. So for those guys, I appreciate the time they give back. So thank you guys.
Any other council comments this evening? Okay, with that, we will move into our public hearing. Up first this evening, we have a request to rezone approximately 46.65 acres located off of Wonderwood Lane and Zach Gordon will be presenting this evening.
No audit tonight for me. Rob already gave our audit. We're busy. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Glad to be here for a presentation, public hearing on a request to rezone about 46 acres off Wonderwood Lane. I will just say that this is a rare straight rezoning request, which means there's no conditions. It's just simply to change from one zone to another. Again, just to summarize, this is a request for a rezoning of 46.6 or so acres from RE rural estate to AG agricultural purposes to allow for family farm and honey production. And as I get into it a little bit later, there are no limitations. And any use that is allowed in the AG zone can be, can be processed. But this is the intention from the applicant. There's no neighborhood meeting required. There was no increase in intensity. And so there's no neighborhood meeting. Planning zoning board recommendation was to recommend approval to the council. Here's a, an aerial just to orient you. Again, you see the blue marker. The closest road there is Wonderwood Lane, which wraps around in a U. And then you have this 46 and a half acre property. And again, a survey just to orient everyone. This is in the town limit, so there's no annexation. Usually we see those two together. This is not a annexation, certainly in the town limits. In terms of the land use, you can see the little green arrowed circle at the bottom. This is in an area recommended for low density residential, which is one to two acres. Essentially, single family detached homes, conservation design, low density in, in every respect. Not, not a lot of intensity in this particular area. And as we do comparison with the UDO and the AG zoning district, AG is really intended for very low intensity agricultural operations, agribusiness, could be agritourism, those types of uses. But really got a protection of open space and conservation areas. The AG zoning is less intense than the zoning that would be allowed or called for by the, the, the halip. And so it is considered to be consistent with the land use plan in terms of both the zoning and future land use. I wanted to put this up on the screen just for your reference. Apologize to folks in the audience who maybe can't zoom in on it as you can, but I'll try and summarize. So this is a use table, and again, any of the uses that are allowed in that use table would be permitted. And we have essentially three categories. One is permitted, one is intended by the applicant, and the other is for special use. And so when we, we look at this, you do see some uses that would be, that the intended use is really for your crop production, crop production, support activity. But permitted beyond that would be other uses that could be allowed. And then I wanted to highlight the special uses, those that would require a special use permit. So that would be an appearance, appearance before the Board of Adjustment, obviously because of the potential impact. Those are a little bit more, those are scrutinized more. But again, this is a straight rezoning and any use allowed in the AG zoning district would be permitted. And the applicant has stated and can certainly testify that the proposal is really for a family farm and some crop production. And so based on the consistency of the rezoning with the Harrisburg area land use plan for low density residential areas in conformity with the requirements of the town GDO, we're recommending approval, provided that any concerns that you may have with this change of use potentially in the future. If the property is sold, that those concerns are satisfied. But at this point, we are recommending approval. Again, there's a motion on the, on the, on screen for approval. There's also a motion for deferral if you'd like to continue this based on any concerns. And we certainly can work with, with the applicant on those, but we're, we're open to either conclusion. And if there's any questions, I'll be glad to answer them, but the applicant, I believe, is here to answer any as well.
Thank you, Zach. Counsel, are there any questions?
Is the owner open to, I mean, you said there were no conditions on the property. But when you look at the agricultural use, I mean, I know the intent, this honeybees, I love honeybees, great. That's perfect, but if your decision, if their decision later changed or their interest became something other than honeybees, that still fit in that category that could be, would poultry fly into that space or would that not?
Come back to.
Yes. Yeah. So if you were to have a poultry farm or, I think that was the question.
And the reason I throw out poultry is because the, the odor that the, you know, you can drive down the interstate and smell the chicken farms. So I have no issue with a honeybee, you know, if later on it became a chicken, then I got concerns. And I would like to know that we could somewhat limit to keep it to what it's being asked for as opposed to, well, it could fit into any of those.
And I think the applicants here and Michael and his family and I, we speak to this, you know, some months ago. So I'll, you know, I'll let him speak for himself, but I think our staff in the review of it and and our report back to council has always been that their, you know, their family farm plan is, fits perfect into that, into that space. I do understand the planning and zoning boards concern with large, large agricultural farms. If this property were ever to be sold, that the zoning goes with it. And I understand the concerns council has related to that too, and I certainly have those. The, the solution to that would, you can put conditions and go through a conditional rezoning, but I'll, I'll let the applicant speak to.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Mike Arnold. We've been Harrisburg residents since 2006. And we were excited when we found this piece of property back in 2016. We purchased it in, in 2017. And there's a long story to go there to try to give you some sort of context. We had purchased the land along with our four boys. One's represented here tonight, Josh.
Hi.
We also are supported here tonight by Stacy and Joe Harris. These are the other neighbors that also have agricultural right next to us. Okay, so if, if you were, if we were ever to sell the property, like if the property itself was purchased by us as a family because they could not sell it to any commercial builder. The land is landlocked by a neighborhood. And the only access is a one lot that didn't park. And we were able to purchase that lot and then to purchase the 46 acres. There's no way in the world that you're going to get a chicken farm with commercial trucks driving up and down that little thing. Because it'll be, the planning committee won't even allow it to happen unless you do some major upgrades to the road. And, and that's where we started out. We started out with, hey, we would like to have this family farm and, and to provide for our families and who wouldn't want their grandkids right down the road because that's what we always used to do. And so we had this vision of, of doing that back since 2016. And we were fortunate enough that our kids made this investment with us. And so we all, as a family, own this land and we've been on the land and we've been working very slowly to get it into a farm-ready kind of component. The next phase for us is essentially, you know, continue our operations, but also to move on to the land with ourselves and our families. And so that's our plan. We have no intention whatsoever of selling the property off to a commercial institution or builder, because we have our kids invested into that property too, which will inherit the land as well. And just like the Harrises, we're, we're looking to them essentially to kind of help us along with that sort of family farm kind of component. They've come tonight in support, but also as, you know, they will also look to farm or grow crops on that land to help with their, with their, their cows per feed. And so we already have a grassy land that we, we, you know, were co-mingled. They, they, they farm that today. We'll expand that operation with them. And so we're growing, you know, essentially wheat, if you will. So no stinky chickens. We don't want that and we certainly don't want to live next to it as well.
Thank you, Michael. Counsel, are there any questions for Mr. Arnold or for Zach?
What are, I mean, are you open to going through the conditional process? It seems like that would get everybody exactly what they wanted. Nothing really changes for you, but for the town and the residents that live over there, they have some sense of permanence of that condition. I understand, yes, we have no intentions of this, but I never say never.
Yeah, well, so we've been, we've been trying to work with Harrisburg's town since 2017 and getting our family onto this land. And we've, all we've run into is some roadblocks. And so the initial, the initial plan that we come back to the town before we purchased the land, we said, hey, we'd like to do this. Is there, before we spend, you know, the, the $300,000 to buy this land, it's a good thing we bought it back then. What are we going to be able to put our family farm on this property? And they go, well, there's no provision for it, but we'll write you one up. And they did. Well, we found out last year that you had actually pulled that out. Cause no one actually used the family subdivision component. And so that's what they writ, written up for us, and that's the reason why we did our due diligence when we purchased the land. You had wrote something up. Now you're telling us we have to go back and go do something again. It, it, it's kind of sour in my mind because we want to put up our barn. You turned us down for putting up a barn on 46 acres. Why couldn't I put up a barn on my 46 acres? Oh, all you have to do is put up a house first. Oh, is that all I have to do? I have to spend half a million dollars putting up my house. I'm going to do it, but I'm not a rich man. I just can't throw this cash out. So you're asking me to go conditionally? Well, if this is the only way to do it, but you see, you see the sour point is, is that I don't necessarily want to, want to, you know, we're going to farm, we're going to live there. You're going to say, well, what's the conditions? Well, I'm going to say, well, what are you telling me the conditions have to be before I agree to that? And we've already been down this road a couple of times. So you said I could build a barn after we went through a lot of meetings, we had our concerns, we went to the state. And we said, I guess we have to de-annex because the town of Harrisburg is not interested in a farm. You guys are interested in producing, you know, houses. And you want people to move into those houses. So the next, next thing is I can't afford to continue to pay $8,000 a year to have this piece of property. You know, it's expensive. And so if I can move onto the property and I can move my kids on the property, then we can do a farm on the property, then, then it's all reasonable. But other than that, I don't know what you mean by conditional. And that's, that's subjective at this point. And I'll be back here again and we won't even know whether or not that's even, you know, appropriate. So you might say, well, gee, you know, bees sting people or, you know, my, my fruit trees, I might have to get. Those are, you know, intensive equipment. Where I'd be running equipment around there. You might have an objection with that. I don't know.
No, I, I think it's more with regards of, we know what it could be and, you know, we've seen other projects where you can write conditions to keep out things that don't need to be there. And, and you know, if it's.
If, if you look at your, if you look at your, the landscape on it, you have to have commercial vehicles come in and do a commercial production, correct? And you'd have to approve any kind of business that would be a commercial business, correct?
If it's already zoned for commerce, if it's commercial and it's already zoned, it's got an existence. That's where this is. It's going to have an existence of what can go there that we would never get to vote. Once it goes to agriculture, anything that falls in the agriculture goes. We don't have any control of that. So what Counselman Patrick was suggesting was we delineate those agricultural items that can be, you know, I mentioned poultry, you know, it couldn't be a chicken. We'll give you the agricultural, but it asks a condition that during the existence of that property, when it's written up, that it will never be used in the purpose of a poultry farm. Would it ever be used for a swine farm? It's those types of things so that, I mean, I'm all for you doing what you want to do there with the honeybees. That's not obtrusive or annoying or anything else to anybody else. But we have to look at the residents too, and that's what we're trying to cover, you and the residents.
You had written this up back in 2017, Article 5, family subdivision. Didn't have anything to do with agriculture. It kept the zoning the same. You pull this away from me. I, I was happy. We were moving forward. Everything was great. Now we can't do this. And now I've got to do this other thing. To me, it's not the agriculture or the, or the, or, or this, but I needed something that I could do my family farm.
So understand that was not meant, that was not taken out because of you. It was taken out because of lack of use, right? We were rewriting the UDO.
Understand.
So it was one of those, hey, what do we not use anymore? What's not needed?
Makes sense. Right. We, we were, we were slow to.
You were in flight or had been in flight.
We, we've been, we've been in flight for many years.
My name's Melissa Arnold and I am Mike's wife. And just to put a little perspective of what that delay was, when you originally put that in, we hired Carvin Custom Homes to build a home for us. They went bankrupt and stole $40,000.
Yeah.
Okay, so that delayed that whole project. And that's why it didn't get used immediately. It was, they dug a basement and then abandoned the project. So that's how it didn't get used right away. And the delay that happened when you hit, have a financial hit like that. So I just wanted to bring that up too. That was one of the reasons why it did not get used.
And I may be able to shed some light on the conditional rezoning that I think would, would help you guys get where you need to get quickly. Cause I know that that's been, you know, your biggest issue is just what's next, what's next, what's next, right? And, and would, would alleviate the concerns that the council and the, and the P and Z board have brought up on the large commercial. Because those things are specific uses in the code. So my suggestion, and you know, Zach can, can walk you through, throughout how to do it. But it's a pretty straightforward process to just take the, the straight rezoning that we have tonight. And you don't need plans or anything. I mean, these are just text notes that go on the rezoning that say, except for swine farm as, as, you know, shown in 140.0406. And accept this. And you guys already agree to those.
Yeah. Yeah.
And, and, and we have those well defined. So, you know, I think in a really short period of time, we can just say, okay, yeah. Everything that you're saying you want to do here fits within this, except this. And then we would give that to you guys to say, does, does this work? And you say yes or no. And then we can then bring that back to the board and say, this works for the applicant. And we've removed, we've exempted these certain conditions. And then you get exactly what, what you've been striving for since 2017. And there aren't any concerns with the boards or the neighbors about, you know, poultry farming and, and large smoke, large scale commercial farming out there, which, you know, it may, the, the land might not be conducive, like you said, but we, it's hard, it's hard to tell people around there. Oh, don't worry. Trust us. It's not conducive.
Yeah. And you, and you see the 46 acres, but realistically 20 acres could be farmed and it had been farmed by Joe when he was a strapping young lad. And, and so we still strap him. The other 26 acres that sits on a hillside has old growth trees. That's where we're going to put our houses. You know, and it's a beautiful piece of land, you know, I don't know anybody in their right mind would want to come and log it, except for a logger. You know, because it's just a gorgeous piece of land and it's rocky. It's, you know, not conducive to growing wheat or anything else, or even putting a, a chicken house on it. So.
I, I would, I would suggest, like you said, I think it's a, it's a, it's a quick step from there to here. I think 99% of the hard work's been done. And you guys have already heard it. The P and Z board's already heard it. So there's, there's not a lot of question, just a matter of eliminating those couple of, of, of risks that neighbors might think they're running into by going straight egg.
So I'd like to speak, if you don't mind for a second. I'm the alternate on the Planning and Zoning Liaison for the council. And their only concern was about the swine, about the swine farm being there. And they wanted to be sure that we as a council heard that. And so we have heard that. When you sent us emails a number of months ago, I went by and I drove by that property. I did not step on it, but I rode by the road to look at it. So I know where you're talking about. I've looked on the G I S and I know, and look, I'm a proponent for large lots. I love that you're going to have land there or whatever. But as Harrisburg does grow, there's all these other parcels around it. And as we've seen through Harrisburg, when the timing's right, those parcels get sold. So there's an access point that could be made into that property from another piece of property somewhere along the lines. So we're just trying to ensure that you as a resident, and it is already in the town limits, that you're taking care of, but also the residents that are around you. And I, I certainly love that you're going to have just four houses on, on this number of acres. I absolutely love it. But I wanted to let you know that I did ride by to see it. I haven't taken your situation lightly. But as the liaison for planning and zoning, they wanted that word passed along that that was their major, major concern was they didn't want to see a swine farm there in the future. So Rob, how long would it take to do what you're proposing?
I would defer to the smart people in planning if they have a, a schedule that they could give on, on something like that. But he may say, I need to look into it and get back to you, but.
Yeah. I, I mean, we have a meeting tomorrow night, Rich, if we get it on, I was glad to do it, but not as possible. December would be the next meeting, uh, planning and zoning could hear it. They'll come before you all in January.
So let me, so let me ask you a question about the conditional zoning. So if we wanted to have 10 chickens that for producing eggs for our family, is that exclude, is that, does that exclude that?
No. So if, if, if Rich should speak to this, I think more broadly, but if you have more than a two acre lot, then you are able to have more than someone that has a 7,000 square foot. That's 7,500. Rich, you want to address the agriculture element of it?
I think he's talking about, you know, a provision in our ordinance that may allow you to have a few chickens on different lots. I think that may be what he's talking about. We're not talking about, about a bona fide farm or something that fits within that category. I think for that, you have to have a minimum of 10, 10 acres to be present use. Have you looked into that?
Yep, we're there.
You're there? So do you already, are you already considered a?
We've, we've been filing the F form on our taxes for, since 2017, since we've been doing honey production. So I have two hives. So I've had up to five hives out there. And so we've been doing beekeeping for quite a while and that's one of the things we generate.
Are you under P U B for taxes?
Nope.
You're not?
Nope.
That just requires 10 acres, you know, in production.
Right. And they, and the one thing that they don't allow is honey production. I sound bad at the heart of it.
That's, that's a state regulation.
That's right.
Yeah. So I, I, I think the, the, the best answer to your question is, I don't think, I think we all agree in principle of, of what you're talking about. And the best way to do, you know, projects like that are through the conditional. Cause we can really tailor it to what you want, you know? If you say, hey, you know, I'm going to split this into four lots or five lots for the family. And each one may have 10 chickens or some, we can, we can put caps in a conditional rezoning to say, you know what, you know, we're not going to eliminate poultry farming in here, but we may say a poultry farming up to 10 chickens per, or, you know, we can be very specific to what, make sure that you're comfortable with, as long as it doesn't exceed the comfort level of the board and the community out there. So that, that's why I really like that conditional, because it just, we don't have to fit that square peg into a round hole. We can, we can make a condition that's exactly tailored to your property.
Zach, can you get him an application so he can maybe fill that part out? I don't think you'd have to do everything different, but just maybe that part to take the ordinance and take the ones that, that we're talking about that may be problematic. And just submit that. Now I don't see a reason why it couldn't go on the agenda tomorrow night. Since it's already been, you know, a matter that's been discussed. Do you? I mean.
I don't, I just wanted to make sure we, it, it's not a public hearing tomorrow night. So it's not like, uh,
Right.
council, uh, sort of advisory. Uh, so I don't have a problem with that. I think it's just a, you know, matter that as Rob said, the, the only conditional just says that we're going to do this, this, which means we're not going to do all that. And so we can just X, X, X through all the uses that you aren't going to do. And just leave the ones that you are going to do. And that way we're, we're good. And maybe we can do a little bit more research on the state and just how to get this moving.
Whatever we do, I'd, I'd want to make sure that we get it right on this next 30 days. I mean, I, we might be able to get it on tomorrow and I don't want to diminish that. But I also don't want to miss a step to get you on tomorrow and then be here in December and say, ah, we forgot Article Three. And, and so we're, you're delayed two more months.
That's what I'm used to.
Yeah, I, I understand. So, you know, I, I, you know, if possible, you know, we might be able to, you know, staff may look at it and say, hey, this is easy. But, you know, I would really count on the next P and Z meeting, given, given yourself that, that three, four weeks between now and then, to make sure that it fits exactly what you're doing. That way you're not.
Sounds like we're pretty clear that it's not going to be a swine farm or a poultry farm.
Right.
Those were the two things that were of concern.
Right. And but the nature of the request that was made is just straight rezoning. And so there's a distinction of if you ask for a straight rezoning, that means there can't be any conditions. It's not allowed by law. If you do additional zoning, you can kill the, you know, very well crafted and put together, then you have it. So, uh, December 20th is the December.
And then you'd be able to hear this at council in the first, second week of, of January. That, that's what I would recommend. Like I said, you can go further, but I think you may be having to rely on some state statutes to cover you. Cause what we would do if we were going to do it in a hurry would be eliminate all those uses. But if you might want to partially exploit that use, you, you probably want to, you know, clarify that in a conditional rezoning, like you said, with the poultry. If we eliminate poultry, if there isn't a specific state statute allowing it, then there'll be zero poultry. So you'd really be relying on the state statute and the state statutes can change too. So I would recommend that you, you know, if you, if you think there's a use that even you might not use it, but you might get it covered and make sure that you don't have to kind of come back for a second bite of the apple. At least that's my recommendation.
Rob, I, I also want to make sure that we have everything lined up for any sort of residential want to make sure that it's kind of all straightened out. Uh, there's several different ways to approach it. I just want to make sure that we approach it the way that you can get one.
Okay.
So that's.
And there's no reason P and Z couldn't call a meeting and hold it. If you want some more time, especially since it's been an item that's already discussed.
Yeah. I'm not sure what that process is, but I'm sure there's a provision for that.
I mean, it would just be unfortunate to have to wait till January, when you could get it done at our next meeting. I mean, look, I get it. It sounds like there's been a lot of trouble for you. Nobody wants the government telling you what you can do on your own property. If I had a genie and someone said, what are we going to do with all the land left in Harrisburg? And I could rub that lamp, my first wish would be bee farms, you know, open. Yes, absolutely. I think we all are just expressing a concern for the commercial farms that have a bad smell. And that's, that's literally it.
We're going to be living there. We don't want that either.
I'm sure you don't.
I live in Abington now. I'm used to good smells.
And so I hate that this happened to you. And I think we all want you to do this 100%. We can all get what we want. If we just make this step, let's try to get it done this year, if at all possible. And just move forward and then you guys can have a happy Christmas.
Thank you.
Be awesome.
So Zach, let me make sure there's no additional, there'll be an additional charge to go. Okay. And it's conditional rezoning that will not have to be a public hearing.
Not, not before P and Z.
Not before the P and Z, but before us.
So I, I think to that point though, if, if, just to preserve the, the additional option, if, if we could continue this to a future meeting with a modification, the application written that's, that will be doable, whether it's for next meeting. And if we can't get off for next meeting, then the following, we can cross that bridge.
You talking about for the council or for?
For, yes, for council. So in other words, my, my thought is we have a, we have a public hearing tonight or a straight rezoning. Talk about modifying that to the conditional rezoning. Uh, we talked about extending this public hearing. Uh, if we extend the public hearing, there could be a change in the nature of the application. We've had this hearing, but in a public setting now, we're talking about changing it to a conditional. If there's not a problem with that, we don't have to re-advertise. We don't, we can just.
I don't see a problem with it. I don't.
I don't either. So.
Okay. Well, then we would, we would follow the motion on there for continuance and then give you guys time to work through, you know, which P and Z board you'll be on, which council meeting you'll be on, and ultimately what the application looks like.
Well, um, do you want to go ahead and hold a public hearing tonight? See if anybody else is here to speak on this. Do that. Get that out of the way.
Did we put up a sign?
There's a sign on the.
There is a sign there. Okay.
So I mean, that, that, that's, that's, uh, you're, you're fault. Uh, we're, we're changing the nature of the development from a string to a lesser, in my view, and therefore it's not more advanced. We're not, we're not saying we're going from a family farm to Wally World, right? So in that sense, it's, it'd be a lesser. It would be, there'd be more constraints on the rezoning rather than less. So I think that that's something that.
That's why I think you can go ahead and do that. But I'm just saying that, you know, for anyone who's here that came to speak tonight.
Right.
To go ahead and have the public hearing for them and take care of that part. And then, you know, either put it on P and Z for tomorrow. If that's too early.
Right.
Then in December and/or maybe a special meeting. And just try to put, punch this thing through. But, you know, we can do as much as we can tonight and understand that it's not over with.
Right. So I don't, I don't have any problem with that because again, I think we're talking about less, not more.
Well, if expert A and expert B are okay with it, I think what they're saying there is at this point you could open a public hearing on, on, uh, this, uh, request. See if there's anybody here that'd be like to speak on it. If there's not, close that public hearing and then entertain the motion for continuance.
Deal. At this time, we will open the public hearing. We'll go to those here in person and we'll then take comments from those joining us via Zoom. Um, we do have the signup sheet and Mr. Arnold was the only one that signed up for that. So is there anyone else here in the audience that would like to speak on this rezoning? Just come up and state your name and address, please.
I'm Joe Harris. Uh, I'm Mr. Arnold's neighbor. Uh, his property probably joins mine. Fifty, 50% of his property joins mine. The Harris's. And, uh, he's been, I really didn't get to know him until several months ago. And, uh, but he's been a good neighbor and, uh, my property joins several other developments. And lo and behold, cows get out. And some of those neighbors are really nasty about. I mean, they don't want a cow setting foot in their backyard or walking across the front yard. Mr. Arnold there, he's got property that that won't bother. And he realizes it. And I think, um, he's actually clearing off some land and I'm going to work it. Probably be hay. Because the majority of my, what I do now is hay and cows. And I cannot see why there's such a fuss about what he's wanting to do. Because it's, I mean, it's something that he's dreamed about doing and I can believe in that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak? If not, we'll move to anyone on Zoom. Just raise your hand in the chat if you would like to speak. Excuse me. At this time, the public hearing is now closed. Mr. Gordon, is there anything else you wanted to follow up on?
Can we put that back up? So we're, yeah. So, uh, we are going to need an action from you all. I think, Rich, based on, um, the public hearing being, uh, opened and closed, deliberation, um, for the council, I'm just thinking again, in terms of, of expediting this. Normally on a rezoning, you would have a hearing and then decide at the next meeting. And so, um, I think in between, it's pretty clear what, what the direction is. We can craft up some conditions that would constrain what can be done to allow, um, the, uh, Arnold's to, to have this family farm. And, uh, I would like to get it on tomorrow night. I don't see there's any issue. Uh, again, their opinions, I advisory, um, and they have, uh, some time tomorrow night. So let's, let's strike while the iron's hot. Come back to you December 12th with a, a condition and put this together and put it to bed. And in the meantime, we'll work on the, the family. And in the meantime, we'll work on the, the family part of the family farm. Make sure we're all straight on that. Um, so we're going to need a motion note to table this until the next meeting.
So we go with the deferral there that you've got written?
That we're not, well, we, we're not going to continue the public hearing at the December meeting.
You'll just have action.
Just action. We're, we're just.
Well, I think it's what he has up there on the screen, but also to add, uh, a part that says it's going to go back to, uh, uh, planning and zoning at their next meeting, uh, and then come back to the council.
But are we continuing the public hearings? So we have to open it up for a public hearing again on the twelfth.
Yes, and, you know, yeah. We, I just thought that since we had already been noticed for tonight, we needed to take care of the people who had shown up, you know, or might have shown up that wanted to speak on it. So you've done that, so. So yes, we'll still have a second public hearing, technically, when it comes back up.
You would just continue the public, you'd leave the public hearing. Uh, you either reopen it and leave it open, or as you said.
Either way, on that, that doesn't matter. So you're, it's, you're fine. Um, so.
Would it put an open and close on the next, whenever this does appear on, on the next agenda, you'll, you'll open and close a public hearing. For comment and then take action at that same meeting.
Honeybee farming is so much easier than this.
Yeah. It's more enjoyable too.
Again, now, one thing that we probably ought to think about right now, because I, Zach mentioned it. And that is, you know, you now have this, uh, procedure where you, you hear it at one meeting, and then you decide at the next meeting. And you make your final decision at that. It seems to me on this one, you, this might qualify under those exceptions that are part of your policy now, that, that, when you hear this in December, after planning and zoning has, has put the thing together in terms of the, the, uh, conditions, that that'll be the last time you need to hear it. Uh, and it'll be over with at that meeting. Does that sound all right to everybody?
Yeah.
Yes.
So.
So I'll motion to defer and send it back to P and Z for further action at the next council meeting. And we're going to hear and make a decision at that meeting.
Sure.
Sarah, thanks. Second, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, Zach. There is no old business. You're good, Mallory. There's no old business on the agenda tonight. For new business, we have consideration of the approval of resolution for a quest of transportation alternatives program funding in coordination with the Cabarrus Rowan Metropolitan Planning. And Mallory is here to get back to us.
They're going to miss the really good presentation. Um, I have a very, very quick presentation for you tonight. Uh, there's a resolution on the agenda for the Cabarrus Rowan, um, Metropolitan Planning Organization Transportation Alternatives Program Grant. I've got the clicker right here, so I'll do that. Uh, so for Hickory Ridge Road Sidewalk, we did complete the feasibility study this fall. Um, expenses are higher than what we would have liked to see and to be able to construct that with town funding, so we're seeking um, uh, tap funding through the C R M P O. Uh, the deadline is this month, and we would expect a decision, uh, at, in December or January. Um, this will close that loop that I keep talking about, the Hickory Ridge, Stallings and Raging Ridge Road loop. Uh, we also want to add a, um, a greenway entrance for the future Back Creek Greenway as part of this, uh, funding request. So very quick, brief presentation. I'll welcome any comments. Otherwise, my suggested motion would be a motion to approve the attached resolution to apply for the funding for this project.
Motion to approve.
Some motion on the floor in a second. All in favor?
Thank you.
Motion's carried. Thank you, Mallory. Maybe right along to action items. Um, Rob, the only thing I had written down was the windscreen on Stallings part that I think we're going to check into. Was there anything else that you had?
I don't, I don't know how I missed that one, but I had zero, so I'll put down the, uh, the windscreen Rodney's wood screen.
Jim is going to do it.
And, uh. Jim got it.
Yeah, Jim was going to get it. That's why you get to pay the big bucks. Um, but yeah, I had nothing for you.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, there is no need for closed session this evening, so is there a motion on the floor to adjoint, adjourn this evening? Is there a second on the floor? All in favor? Uh, any opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you all.